And then he happened to set great scores and then like everyone else is just going straight into like uh the competitive and then like no one has time to think.
Yeah. I I knew that, so I don't know why I played on the competitive mode, I guess to like get used to the timer. But yeah, like I I did that a while back. I played on casual and then it went on the leaderboard, so. I kinda knew that, but I'm sure they're gonna fix it here pretty quick.
It'll be cool.
It's mad fun at the moment, though. Geez, it's sick.
It's also an issue that it's ridiculously addictive.
Yeah, see, I've I've been trying to force myself away from it because it's like it just takes it takes so much time. Because if you're getting to like stage twenty, you you're burning like twenty minutes to half an hour of you like each time. Just to try and get up to that stage that you were stuck at. So so like at the moment, I'm like, I'm doing like five runs a day because I'm like trying to be cautious of the fact that, you know, I gotta do other stuff in life.
You could easily rinse like five hours without even knowing what's just happened.
A hundred percent.
And you guys in the crowd start thinking about your questions. We'll try and get to as many as we can today.
Rich, what's the furthest one you've gotten up to?
I think I made it to sixteen. I'm not great.
But like on other days?
Uh, I think I I think I made it to eighteen once, but I haven't broken twenty, that's for sure.
I broke twenty only once.
Oh dang, Jeff's here. He's not allowed to come up and talk, though. Kieran said he'd be five minutes, guys, so give him just a minute.
Um, I also tweeted about this, if anyone wants to retweet to get the word out. So I just don't think a lot of people know that this is happening right now. I see a lot of content creators here because I announced it in the content creator chat.
Yeah, I told the. I think.
If someone wants to record it as well, record it because my OBS keeps crashing my computer at the moment.
Yeah, I've got a I think there's a few people recording it. I know that um Illuvia Nation is definitely recording it. Um, yeah.
Sick.
So have you guys played versus each other yet?
Versus.
Yeah, you guys played for any money yet?
Nah nah nah, wait for PvP for that.
Yeah, I'm I'm waiting for PvP for that. Fighting on the leaderboards is fun enough.
No one play casual loads. It's just not on. Everyone play ranked.
Just remove the option. Yeah, sorry for the short notice on the meeting. Hopefully, uh, I'm thinking we'll just do it like maybe once per epoch, maybe twice. I don't know. We'll see how this goes.
Say, guys, I'm gonna do it however many.
I don't think I can share my screen on here. Not in the not on the stage. Here we go. Announcements coming out right now. Just a minute. We lost Dick. Can you get back in?
Can be able to. Okay, I'm doing that, everyone. That helps.
I'll message Dex if he's if he can get back in. Hey, he's got it.
Alright, yeah, we're good.
Sweet.
Hey. Uh, am I starting the stage?
No, 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 no. I'm I was just gonna have all you guys up here and then so. Yeah, so we'll get this started. Basically, this is the first town hall and what we'll do is I'm gonna call up. Um, whoever has a question in the audience, you can raise your hand and then um I'll call up one person at a time to come up here and ask your question, give each of the council members an opportunity to give their opinion or an answer and then we'll kind of move like that. Uh, Raw Lord is had some issues with work today, so he's not necessarily gonna be able to talk. If he gets time, he will. But um he's at least here to listen and um Santiago, he uh got ill last night, so he wasn't able to make it, but. Well, um, yeah, we'll go ahead and kick this off. Anybody that has a question um for the council? What?
Uh, sorry, before you do that, I'm actually, it's it's weird. I don't know if it's glitched out, but I'm still in the waiting room and I can't actually see anyone like normal. I don't know if that's because you've started one, but uh I think we may have started two different stages potentially.
Uh, I mean, I see you here. The Venom Vulcan.
Okay, alright, sweet.
Yeah, I mean, I I think.
Okay, if you as long as you can hear me, then it's sweet. It's just I can't see anyone else, but that's that's cool. It's it's I'm seeing the start the stage screen.
Oh, yeah, I guess you could start the stage because yeah, I don't have the ability to start the stage because you're a stage moderator. I don't know if you can make me that.
Right, right. Got it, got it, got it. That's what I was um so I've got to start the stage.
Yeah.
Cool. Let's do it.
Alright. Yeah, there.
Ah, there we go. There we go. Okay.
Cool.
Alright, yeah, so uh anybody have a question for the council already? Like uh just raise your hand and then I'll call you up on stage. Nobody came questions ready? Oh, here we go. We got Crucial.
Hello, hello. How's it going, guys?
Good man.
Alright, quick question. Um, and I I just know I don't think it's been discussed as of late. Uh, would the council be the uh deciding factor when it comes to a like community-driven like merch department or um is is that not part of council's uh obligations and duties?
Right now, it sits under marketing. It's something that came up probably six months ago. Uh, we talked about a range of different things that basically touched on marketing partnerships with uh other protocols, uh exchanges, um merchandise deals, all of that kind of stuff that's really bespoke and quite unique and sometimes is also has some privacy issues attached to it as well. In those situations, uh we we basically just said we'll let the marketing department handle it. They're the experts. You know, we've got a team of seven people now and and so, yeah, those decisions have been left to uh to internal core contributors at the moment, but uh but yeah, it it can always be discussed again.
Sure. And then second kind of follow up, uh are there any scheduled other like uh community events similar to like, let's say, the Last of Luvio, like a lot of the community created fan stuff or created things. I think it was really uh beneficial to create that uh that hype again. Not to say it's gone. Um, I was just gonna ask if anything in that uh regard has been discussed to come up in the near future.
Yeah, there are a bunch of things that we need to do. It's it's sort of it's sort of moved a little bit. We we intended to have land sale done and a Louvitas done by now, um which kind of would have kept everyone preoccupied with that rather than uh you know, the little competitions that we were doing. So it's kind of a a ramp up, you know, our first step was competitions, partnerships, things like that with with other protocols to bring people in. Now, the next step is to really start delivering products and have people occupied, you know, actually using our products. Because the the goalposts have been moved there, we obviously are always thinking about little things that that we can do here and there, but I would say the 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 best way that you can help in that regard is by either suggesting something to a council member, a moderator, a core uh core contributor. Uh, there's a marketing channel where you can post ideas in. Uh, we we are always looking at those channels and we we will listen to your feedback, you know, that that community competition. I'm pretty sure that was uh an idea that actually came from the community. So uh so, yeah, um.
Yeah, and talk to me too.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. And and Rich as well.
Yep, and I I can uh, yeah, we do talk too much as it is.
Um, I appreciate it. That's all kind of on my front. I can hop out if you want to have someone else come in.
Alright, uh, okay. Does uh anybody else have a question for the council regarding IIPs or? Oh, Flicker?
Hey, sorry, I couldn't put in a request. Um.
Oh, okay, no problem.
Put me right in here. Uh, this is, I guess, primarily a question for Kieran, but also the other council, if you want to chime in on your thoughts. Um, Kieran, you mentioned yesterday that you're working on an IP to kind of revise uh the way the governance is working, kind of to be more appropriate for gamefi instead of DeFi. Um, just like big picture wise, I guess I was wondering um what what sort of changes you were looking to make and for the other council, like what sort of changes do you think are necessary for governance structures?
Yeah, so I think that the whole difference between and and what I'm realizing between us and a DeFi-only protocol, you know, not not a gamefi uh protocol is that we basically we're 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 kind of split in two. So we've got the people that are gonna be coming into the the ecosystem that actually want to play the game. And then you're gonna get people who don't actually care about playing the game or or very slightly care about playing the game, but they're mainly here to be investors. And that's fine. We, you know, we we need those people as well and they need to be able to have a say. However, I wanted to slowly shift more towards the gamer as we go go along. So basically, we're and when I say shift, I'm I mean, uh, the decision-making starts shifting, so it's not so heavily based on whales being able to dictate things. And it's basically a gamified version of governance that really, really incorporates a whole bunch of elements in the ecosystem that you need to be active in. And if you are active in the, you know, whether it's community, whether it's to do with ILUVIUM Zero, uh in-game actions, um, you know, uh governance things. The more active you are as a ILUVIUM community member, the more power you're gonna have with this system essentially. So it's it's taking a little bit of power away from that top-heavy uh investor uh sync that we have and and saying the people that are actually going to be playing this game, they should have more of a say over the improvements, the changes, I believe. Probably not more than the guy who is is putting in the money, but probably more just purely based on the fact that they're as act the the most active people in the the community. And it also uh by gamifying it, it really promotes participation. Like, we we want people actively looking at things in the ecosystem and saying, you know, how can I improve it? How can I make it better? How can I balance that? How can I improve that? And uh and hopefully this system will promote that sort of activity.
Awesome. That sounds really uh sounds really cool.
And ju- just to expand on that a little, it's also like you get into the situation where if it's people who are deeply involved in the game and the gamers that are helping make the decisions, that will also help the investor side because then it makes the game better for everyone, which the investors might not have the insight to if they're not playing the game. So it's about balancing out that system.
Hmm. Yeah, that's uh, I wasn't gonna mention that, but that's the vision that I sort of have for a V three governance. It would it would literally be separating it uh potentially creating a a committee that then speaks to the council or or two committees, one one more uh investor committee and the other more a players committee that, you know, introduces guilds and and stuff like that. And then those two committees meet, one committee i- is uh designed to deal with all the IIPs to do with balancing and in-game changes. And then on the other side, you've got the committee meeting who might have someone, you know, like a a Santiago or whatever that's really clued in with DeFi things. And we can say, you know, hey, staking's finishing soon. What should we do here? I I don't think those two at that point will have such a large cohort of gamers and such a large cohort of investors. I think it would be smart to separate them and then have one final decision-making council that sits in between but above both of of those committees, if you will. And then they make the final call on whether or not we go ahead with either or. And that would be, you know, core control, what effectively what this council is.
Gotcha.
Uh, one second.
And Annie Mositas, we'll get to you in just a second. And anybody else that has a question, you can go into the queue uh request to speak and I'll call you guys up after after a minute or so.
How does this sound?
Much better.
Really?
Okay, this is.
Aren't you meant to be a content creator?
I'm on holiday, man.
Ah, fair enough.
Sorry, guys.
That's much better.
Oh, you can hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, cool. So um that's an idea that I hadn't really considered. Um, but it's it's definitely a very good idea because it speaks to exactly what ILUVIUM talks about. And that being like, once the game comes out, we want the game to be shaped, not by like a big organization and big whales that never really know know or listen to the gamers really ask for and what they really want to see and experience in a game. And this actually gives the community and the player base a legit is like, honestly, it's a genius idea as pretty much everything that that the caring comes up with. So yeah, I I think it's a good idea.
Uh, just, yeah, so uh I don't, there's there's gonna be a whole bunch of stuff that that needs to be added to it. Just to just to be clear, this I only started working on this at the start of the week, but but yeah, Venomor is exactly right. It's all about I I just didn't feel like we were going in the direction that I wanted governance to go into. Although we wanted governance to go into originally when we you know, the the three br- when the three brothers got together, we said, you know, if we're gonna go decentralize them, we just do it and we properly be the first game that is actually you know, things things are decided by the community and, you know, proper meaningful things. So this is the next step in that direction. It'll hopefully get people active and interested in the governance process. And it's a way of us testing, let's see if people actually do that because it might be a situation of, okay, now that there's gamification in governance and the more active I am, the more voting power I have, so the more decision-making power that I have. But actually, I'll just let the devs do it. You know, if 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 that is the case, then we're gonna have to totally rethink governance uh again. But I don't think it's gonna go that way. I I genuinely think we have the type of community where if we said you know, go and complete one action in you, you know, in a month and you get some and you start accumulating these points and at the end of the the three months, the the epoch, you're able to combine those points and say, I've done all of these amazing good things for ILUVIUM over the past three months. I'm now I now have an extra, call it twenty percent or thirty percent voting power. And I want that, you know, if 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 I'm right and and people do want to do that, then we can, like the V three governance version, we can really, really build this out and double down and and stuff like that because at this point, I haven't even spoken to Aaron about it.
Good deal. Alright, well then, yeah, we'll uh we'll put that one on the put a pin in it for now. Till you actually till we get some more information, but um.
Yeah.
Let's bring up uh Annie Mositas. Here you go.
Yeah. Hey, everyone, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
Very good. Um, so this is actually related to what Kieran just shared. I think it's a brilliant idea to split the uh the content between the investor side of things and the gamer side. As a follow-up to that, in that that, let's say, two parallel structures, would you see a split on the gamification side based on the the in-game titles? So for instance, ILUVIUM Zero and the Autobattler and then you know, let's say there's a first-person shooter a few years out. Um, do you see those being then essentially three different subcommittees in that instance that would each be tasked with giving you feedback on the individual game titles themselves as part of the broader studio?
So, yes, uh, I do. And then this obviously, as you as you all know, this is a topic that that really, really interests me and there's the thing that I love is it's so new, you know, no one has ever done this before, ever. And and if they have, they haven't done it to this scale. And so as I'm building this framework out and I'm starting to think, you know, what what is the future of of this? I'm starting to get a picture that is very similar to what you just described with actually having three committees. One DeFi, one land and one uh call it ILUVIUM, you know, wh- whatever the 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 main game and arena modes and and whatever. So there would actually be three. And the reason is I can see land owners and landholders like starting to band together and create these like committees or or even like guilds inside of ILUVIUM Zero anyway. And I can sort of see like two totally different types of players, but because there's the variable of of land affecting the in-game stuff, I can see a lot of robust discussions happening between the two sides of 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 the the coin and, you know, how we actually work out how it all comes together. I haven't gotten that far yet, but it's really, really exciting to to start sitting down going, okay, these guys are gonna have to be meeting over here. These guys are gonna have to meet over here. These guys are gonna have to meet over here. Then how do we bring all of them together to this main council that says, okay, this is a good idea, but actually, no, you guys have this isn't gonna work because it's gonna ruin the balance of this and and how do you get them all to synergistic synergistically work together with uh with the goal in mind of we need to balance everyone's needs now across. We can't just, you know, give everyone what they want in the main game. We can't give everyone what they We can't just, you know, give everyone what they want in the main game. We can't give everyone what they want in land. And the DeFi investor people can't start, you know, building whatever they want, right? So, yeah, it's, uh, it's exciting. It's something that. I think we need to put a lot of thought into. But again, that's, that's like a V three. What I'm talking about is a V two. I think we need to test gamification first. If that works, then we, again, we double down.
It, yeah, it seems like a natural extension of the democratizing of, of DeFi into the gaming sector. Where I think player bases have always wanted to have more of an input into the decisions of development teams. And you, you don't ever really get that in a centralized approach, but, um, with game five seems logical. Cool. Thanks. And appreciate all the work the council's doing on everything. You're doing great.
No worries.
You can, uh, drop me off the stage now, Rich.
All right. I think, uh. Yep, there we go. Veddermore Vulcan, you guys got anything on that? Or no? We can call up another one if not.
No, call up another one. I think that's just the kind of thing that'll keep evolving over time.
Okay, here we go.
He just wants to play another game.
If I gotta play on casual now.
Here I am.
Wait, Kiran, do you play on casual or ranked, mate?
Ranked, I heard someone, Grant was telling me yesterday that someone plays on, like, hours of the practice mode. Every single morning and then goes into.
No, no, no. Casual counts to the ladder. Your, your casual score goes on the ladder. Yeah, it's a fucking outrage, mate.
What?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's a bug right now, people are saying.
All right, I gotta leave this call, guys. Okay, anyway, let's not talk about that. Uh, yeah, let's move on.
Yeah, Nick's at our, let's hear it.
Uh, so for all the changes that are going to happen to the all of you game in the future. Where exactly is the line gonna be drawn when deciding whether or not we need to like change through an IP? Or it's just gonna be immediately changed in the game?
So no one has the answer to that, to be honest, because again, we've, we've never, this is uncharted territory. All I can say is we've had a few examples of that. I brought one up earlier in marketing. Where the community was pushing for more transparency and, and, uh, I think. We did a, a, a couple of things to improve that transparency. But, uh, sometimes, you know, you just, you just can't do it. So, uh. Yeah.
I'll, I'll jump in. I, I, I don't think it's a perfect, it, it, there's like a perfect answer for it. Like for me personally, when I look at things like, you know, ga, like changes to balancing in the game, I think you can gauge a community sentiment. And get an idea of what needs a change, but the actual change comes down to devs and that sort of thing. And with like what Kiran was saying about the marketing inside and stuff like that, you can, um, like even if like, okay, it's like. The, the team makes the decision on this one, if the community is like, we want more input and the council's like, okay, maybe we. Say we have a discussion because it's pretty open discussion. And we just say, okay, this is the kind of thing that we want to have a say in before you do it next time. And obviously that may look like, you know, it's not the way it should have happened in the first place. But you've got to evolve and adjust with how things are happening and how the community sentiment is.
Yeah, it's an ongoing conversation between. And the developers, because like right now they're developing the game and they're making tons of decisions about the game that no one knows about. Honestly, they should because nobody knows the game deep enough. And then once the game comes out, even changes an update, they know it deeply like the back of their hand. So they should, I believe, make changes to the game to balance things out different things. And then gauging community sentiment will be important. There will come like a time where certain decisions, maybe the community believes. Need to be, you know, made by the community and that conversation. Um, but like that conversation for once the game comes out, um, and it will.
You, you, you like in it?
Yeah, it's, so to echo that, I mean, again, the, it's a very hard. Question to answer because we can't predict the future. But I've seen it, uh, I've lived it in this community before. When things get, when requests get unreasonable. I feel like the community is pretty reasonable about saying, you know what? Let's just let that one go through to the keeper. You know, I think we've proven that we're not. We're here for the community. We're, we're, we're never gonna do anything that harms that because if we do, we, we lose the game. So I'm pretty confident that we could, we, we can fluidly move through this situation. Like we have been doing with DeFi because even, even when you consider other game five. Projects out there that are decentralized, we're still much, much further ahead. In terms of our entire governance system and, and how mature it's been and whatever like that. So, and so we've already been going through things that we aren't really normal and, and. We've been working them out as we go and it's worked pretty streamlined. I've, I've been pretty impressed by that. There hasn't been any situations where it's like, we demand this. And, and to be honest, that, that ability is there, you know, if, if for whatever reason. The community thought strongly around an idea, the whole reason for the council. Here, like if you take me off of this, the other four members are there. Because they're technically like on your side, which they are. And so there's always a position, like you're never gonna be sitting there like, hey, you know, we're all demanding. This thing and the devs aren't listening. It's like the, it, it's not possible in the governance model that we've created. It, we have to listen and we have to execute on what the community is asking for. Unless we think that it's, it's going to be, it's gonna have some sort of terrible outcome. You know, then we step in, but even at that state, right? Even if we wanted to unilaterally decide, hey, you guys are all wrong on this, which. To be honest, like I, I just don't think that would happen. But even if we did and the E Dow had to step in and say, hey, you council members are insane. That's still another conversation that comes up. It's not, no, we are not doing this because you guys are wrong. It's like, hey, we think you are wrong. Let's open this discussion back up. Because without naming any other projects out there or whatever, I'm hearing a lot of that. Just my voice isn't being heard and that is the entire reason that, that we've gone so hard on governance early on. That's the entire reason I'm, I'm now starting to think, how do we get players more involved? How do we get the people that are actually using the product more involved now? Let's, let's have this set up before it's actually a thing. And then in six months' time. Whales will be like, oh, okay, yeah, we don't have as much governance power. But you know what? They, they probably should go, I, I shouldn't based on, you know, the fact that I'm not as active. As other community members. And so it's, again, the whole thing is designed. For players to have a voice.
Right. Thank you. That, I was just wondering because I knew that. There has been questions about that and I, I just thought I'd bring it to you guys, even though. I figured that there wasn't gonna be a definite answer yet because we are kind of going into uncharted territories, like you said. Thank you.
Good deal.
Cool. Thanks, man.
Okay, let's get, uh, Seven Sky up here. Hey, you're muted. There you go.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Uh, yeah, a little low, but yeah, we can hear you. Better than Veddermore.
Yeah, I'll try to do it a bit louder. Um, yeah, first of all, I wanna say how awesome you guys are doing, uh, all of you, um. You know, people don't give enough credit for how tough it is to just, you know, build a game, like straight up, just build a game. And then, then you have to build a good one and, you know, the graphics truly are, uh, top of the industry right now, um. And, you know, the, just creating all those mechanics, you know, like I was, I was reading those, all those effects, like they. I don't think they're, I don't think they're easy to figure out. Like they're very intricate, complex. Like it's a, that, that's strategy and theory crafting is what. Makes an auto battler because, you know, the setup, the setup is everything, right? Creating the composition and then, and then, um, seeing it versus whatever's meta. And keeping in mind all of the interactions, um, that's what makes the game. So I think, uh. You know, it's looking real good and just, uh, congratulations for that, uh, for all, first off.
Thanks, man. I, it's, it's probably more a congrats to Aaron who isn't in here. But Aaron and the game designers have done a fantastic job. That, that was the thing that I was kinda like, okay, I know it's in principle, looking at it. It sounds like it would be fun to play based on, you know, the, the previous auto battlers that I have. But that's a very different thing, looking at it on paper and actually playing it. And we knew the graphics, like we've, we've been watching the graphics evolve over time. And obviously, you know, you, you watch the, the, the testing of the game as it evolves as well. But we knew very, very early on that it was gonna be triple A graphics. We just. I, it's just the peace of mind of, of this beta coming out and it being as, as solid as it is. In terms of like the lack of bugs and glitches and crashes and, and things like that. Uh, it's, it's honestly, it's remarkable that they've been able to produce the, the product that they have. And the design, like the actual game design is so addictive. That without even yield, people are, you know, going nuts over this. So, yeah, I congratulate them as well. I, I definitely echo that.
Yeah, I mean, I hear that, but wasn't it your idea to make all of you in the first place? Don't you deserve?
It was. I didn't design the game. It was my idea to come up with a game five game. But apart from saying poke, I want it to be a collectible game. Um, yeah, it was pretty much Aaron and then, and since then, even, even, you know, there's been a lot of evolution. Like eighteen months ago, when I thought of the idea of a game five project, there's been. Like I don't even know what's going on anymore. Like there's just so much stuff, so many people have contributed, like just. Ridiculous hours to this, that who knows anymore who started all of you. I don't even care. All I care about is, is beating people on the league boards.
I see. Yeah, all of you, it's, it came up before Wolf Game, didn't it? It's more senior than Wolf Game because.
Uh, Wolf Game, I'm not. Not sure Wolf Game.
Yeah, it's another sort of game five sort of projects, like gamified, it's like staking. And it's not really real gameplay, but it got really popular in like the so-called mainstream NFT land, which is still dominant in the current, you know. Current NFT landscape, those guys are, have the most, um, sway at the moment. You know, like the blockchain games are still sort of a promise because, you know, everyone kind of knows in the future blockchain games are gonna be huge. They haven't taken over quite yet. So at this very moment, you know, in the present, kind of it's still on the artsy side of entities, you know. You know, the profile pictures are all on top. Um, and I was thinking like, why is Wolf Game so popular? And then I thought, you know, if you're kind of in their world for just a moment, like those guys, they, they traffic in alpha groups. They love alpha. Active in those communities, keeping an eye out for their reputation, you know, just talking about what's good, what's meta, checking out all these new projects to trade. And they don't really have time to really dive deep into a game. And so like when I saw Wolf Game, it's like not really. Have to spend hours and hours getting good at Wolf Game, but they kind of own these NFTs and they can stake them and they're like playing a game, but they're not really. You know, they don't have to devote a ton of time to a game because then that would take away from their actual, you know, being in that alpha group community and, and interacting and. And doing what, you know, the trading lifestyle. Um, so I was thinking like, all of you is probably something that could appeal to them too because. You know, it's an auto battler, so they can, you know, they can chill out a bit if they wanted to. Obviously, if you wanna dive into it, you can research all that strategy. But you don't have to like spend hours grinding mechanics in, in a practice mode or, you know, you don't have to be super sweaty about it. It's more of a, and then the quality of the graphics is super good, so it'll attract those guys who like, you know, visual stuff like their, you know, the profile picture art. Um, so I was wondering if, uh, based on the industry, like this, this is kind of a game that, um, would attract that sort of crowd, which is still. You know, as we say, it's still like the bigger, um, community at the moment and in NFTs. And, and one day gamers will, will be here, so.
Yeah, I actually haven't heard of them before. So, yeah, we can, we can, we can, we can talk about it, um, offline.
Yeah, yeah.
But, um, is, is the question that you're asking essentially if like the types of NFT games that require less work? And just like taking the, uh, is the crowd that's interested in those? And I think the answer to that is some will and some won't, all of you. But I think so far, having played it and the biggest concern I had coming in was that it actually just looked so complicated. That, um, maybe it's gonna be too hard to play and frankly, it's incredibly intuitive, quick to learn. And the actual mechanics are a lot more basic than they look. It's really hard to watch someone playing it. And just like fully understand what's going on. But once it's in front of you, it's very quick to learn. So I don't think it's as complicated.
Yeah, they're simplistic systems. They're, they're meant to be very, very complex. But very easy to understand. And, uh, to be honest, like. TFT, it's the exact same thing. Chess, it's the exact same thing. Like people are, eh. You have to make it competitive. You have to make it skill-based. If people are worried about it being too competitive. I would say, I, I would ask why, right? Like what are we, what are we trying to do here? We're, we're trying to build the most popular esports game in the world. It's gotta be super competitive. It's gotta be super complex. You know, people in, in the beginning were like, oh, but will you, you know. Will you actually be able to build a, a system that keeps people interested? Because there's, because there's so many different meta strategies to explore. And we should probably have this conversation with the people that are playing the game. But you'll see, there's tens of thousands of, of different strategies that, that you can take. And it's only gonna get more once we add in augments and, uh, weapons and stuff costing. Uh, mastery points and, and things like that. So to be honest, um, I'm not worried at all. All, all it's gonna do is make people try harder and harder and harder to get to that top, which is what we want.
And on top of that, you got the open world, so you have the casual collector side covered there as well.
Yeah, and, yeah, I mean, there's, yeah, there's the whole side of it that is just pure. Yeah, as you're saying, purely like running around, collecting things, like you're, you're not PvP-ing someone. It's like, it's, yeah, uh, it, it should, it should cater to those people that are. Looking for a casual experience, but probably not the, the PvP modes. Yeah.
Yeah, a little bit of something for everyone. Um, we got, we got Zep Tile up here. He, uh, had requested to talk a little while ago, but he just got in here, so. Here he goes up town.
Yeah, thank you for having me. Uh, actually, it's about an IIP that we are gonna drop with ACG soon. Uh, later this week, actually, it's almost finished. Uh, the whole IIP thing, where it comes from, it comes. It comes from the fact that in I I P I C C P discussion channel, we saw a lot of people actually worried about. We're giving out money to competitive players. Um, I totally agree with the team on the fact that it's o- okay and totally. Um, fair to actually reward skill. I mean, I come from the esports and mainstream gaming, so. Uh, I, I won't disagree on that point of, of course, but I can understand that some people might get worried about this system. So we tried to figure out a system where actually we can find by ourselves, by a self-sufficient model. Uh, how to reward, uh, ranked game players without making an entry fee for ranked play, uh, ranked games. Because a ranked fee for a ranked game, um, games would actually make it way, way. Disgusting for actually real competitive players. I think we agree on that. So basically what we came up with is an additional game mode. I don't know if you guys actually know Earthtone. In Earthtone, you have an arena mode where you have, where actually you pay to enter. And during, while paying, you get, um, a certain amount of games that you can play. Let's say you can play five games or seven games. And the better you succeed at those games, the better your rewards. So let's say one would be paying like ten bucks to enter that. It's just a complete random number, okay? Uh, let's say I would pay ten bucks to play my seven games. If I actually do fifty percent of wins, I start getting rewards from it. And no matter what, from these entry fees from this mode. Uh, five percent would go for the Dow and five percent would go to the ranked players. As like top X rewards. Uh, this way we could reward the top ranked players without taking out money from the Dow.
Okay, and where are you saying the ninety percent is?
Uh, the, the ninety percent is to reward the, this arena mode players. Like, let's say I play seven games and I got like, I'm gonna take not number, like, like, yeah, it's a prize pool, like.
Yeah, you're just talking about a prize pool tournament.
Yeah, at, 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 at three wins, basically I would get, let's say, just my entry fee back, you know? But maybe at, at four wins, I get, I start getting a little bit extra. So it actually allows us well, um, smaller players, like not as competitive, to actually still get some yield from P V P. Because you don't have to be top one percent or top zero point five percent to actually get yelled. But you can also get the, uh, some money from being just in the good health. And that actually rewards some casual players. Uh, and I, I think that's gonna. Help just with that concern that people are having about we are, we giving out money to competitive players.
Just to, just to add on that, like, uh, we're, we're talking when the full game is launched, you, you're referring to, or are we referring to? Yes. Okay.
So what, what, what I would, what I would say on that is. Wait until we release our game modes. So you're explaining tournaments. We are definitely going to be doing tournaments. There's definitely going to be casual tournaments. There's going to be the ability for organizations, guilds to create bespoke tournaments. We're even talking about doing that with survival mode. I was literally just about to, uh, bring that up next. If, if no one had any other questions, but we are working out a way to. Start in-game yield with survival mode. Obviously, again, when we're fully. Open beta, like we're not going to keep this private and, uh, and be giving out yield. But, uh, but tournaments and, and bespoke tournaments are potentially going to, to be part of that. So all I would say is, until you know what the game modes are gonna be. In terms of how we're going to, uh, position tournaments and, and stuff like that. I would wait to publish that I I P because it's, it's more about improving. Things and, and those systems, uh, those, the, the style that we're going to give out. Uh, tournament rewards and, uh, overworld and arena. None of that has been set in stone at all.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, but yeah, so, so, uh, really, really cool that, that you guys are working on that. Glad that, that you're thinking about that. But, uh, yeah, probably share that. In the, uh, I I P discussion channel and we can take a look. Sounds, sounds good.
Okay, thank you. Uh, just to make sure, uh, we are not, not actually talking about a tournament. We are talking about a game mode where you go and you just queue with other people.
Yeah, but yeah, same, same as Hearthstone.
Yeah.
Yeah, different definitions, same, same, same thing. All good.
Okay, yeah, we'll share it in the I I P discussion. Thank you for having.
Awesome. Thanks, man.
Thanks, dude.
Okay, I think we, uh, you guys got time for one more since we started a little late.
Yeah, go nuts. Amazing.
Chartington? Let's get Chartington up here. Here you go.
Testing? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Sounds good, man.
Hey, guys, uh, thanks for having us and doing this A M A. Um, I wanted to, as, I'm, I'm sure we all are long-term investors here. Um, and as a gamer particularly, are free to play multiplayer games, uh, throughout my life, I'm. I want to ask about the long-term, um, free-to-play to pay-to-play kind of journey. Um, an example being like you play League of Legends, for example, you start playing, your friend tells you about it. You start playing, you, you get addicted, you find a good character and then you're like, eh, what's ten bucks for a skin, right? And then the more skins come out and then you spend more and more money. Um, so I, I just want to ask, like, in, in the future, like set two, set three, what the. Like free-to-play to pay-to-play kind of customer journey looks like?
To me for this one, I, I, I look at Aluvium like a card game, like a trading card game. I think about it as, and it like, it doesn't really correlate with free-to-play mobile gaming and stuff like that. And I don't get directly correlates to things like League where you buy skins. Um, Pokemon cards, Yu-Gi-Oh cards, M T G, whatever you're into. It's that sort of thing where to play those games, you actually need a deck. Like you can't play those games without a deck, whereas at least Aluvium, you can get, you know, the tier zeros and stuff like that. So it's more of a progression of, you don't have to wail into it like other. N F T games. I think that's the biggest issue in the space is like, you've got to have heavy investment just to play a game. Whereas Aluvium's that, that easy progression of, I, I think back to me as a kid, like I'd have a birthday party and I'd get like twenty bucks. From my birthday party and I'd go straight to the shops and get some Pokemon cards. So it's like, it's not that heavy investment and it's a very s- slow and gradual progression from free-to-play into played. And you don't have to over invest to keep that journey going. And I think, um, due to the way it is, when you get Pokemon cards, you just open a pack of cards and it's like done in a second. Whereas you're actually also getting game value enjoyment out of opening that pack in Aluvium where you're playing. Like, I don't know the exact time it'll take for an overworld trip, but you know, you might be playing forty minutes. Of a gaming experience on top of getting that card out of it. So I, I, I'd say it'd be a slow and gradual one. And then obviously you will have whales as well, but go ham on it too.
Hey, uh, Vulcan, you know, when you open a pack of Pokemon cards, that's, that's a game. You know, you actually play that game or you're meant to, you're meant to play that game.
Yes, and you, and you tease yourself by hiding the one and you're like, is it going to be a good one? Like, but what I'm saying is like Aluvium is a much more expanded version of that where you get more enjoyment of your time. Yeah.
I'm being facetious. Sorry. And so, yeah, yeah.
I, I, don't, don't get me wrong, like, man, I, I've opened that many Yu-Gi-Oh cards and Pokemon cards. It's not even funny.
Um, yeah, you just go straight to the holographic. Did I get a Charizard? Um, and away we go. But to answer your question from my perspective, we will always keep Aluvium free to play. There will always be a mode for you to jump in and not have to connect your wallet and be able to go around and, and. Experience the game. Right now, we've got people playing survival mode. That's gonna very rapidly open up and there's no yield to it. But again, that mode is designed to get people familiar with the auto battler, familiar with the characters. And get people like hooked. And the retention rate of like, with the, the people that are. On the beta that are playing daily is disgustingly high. And obviously it's a beta, so you know, it's, it, it is going to be high. But, uh, yeah, you know, we're, it's, it's happening right now, like. What happened with my experience when I first joined? Was that, you know, I had to buy a whole bunch of N F Ts to start my gaming experience. And then once I got in, after I'd invested such a large amount, there wasn't a, a free-to-play option. So I had to start investing more and. You know, without having fun, it didn't last very long. So we want to do the opposite of that. And there'll be a game mode across literally everything that we do that is free to play. And the idea is to get you hooked and, and into that gameplay loop.
Right. That makes sense. So like, uh, uh, opening a pack of Pokemon cards is kind of like the equivalent of. Buying fuel or, or the shards to scan and, and.
No, traveling. It's, 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 it's literally the, the exact same thing as traveling into a region. When you enter that region, that's you opening up the, the cards.
Okay.
And they, they're just scattered, they're just scattered all around and you've just got to go around picking them up. If you don't want to, when you open a pack of Pokemon cards. There's generally two that you will actually care about. And then the rest you, you leave because you've either caught them before or, or, uh, whatever.
Right. That makes sense. I've always thought the best analogy for Aluvium was, you know, at the Yu-Gi-Oh show where they like. Play cards and the holograms appear and they actually battle. I feel like this is the digital equivalent of that. Uh, so thank you guys for answering my question.
No worries. Thanks, mate.
Thanks, dude.
All right, well, um, I think we'll call it there. We're right about an hour after we started a little bit late. Um, but yeah, well, unless you guys have anything else to add before we take off from this town hall.
Um, final. Final thoughts from, oh, not really final thoughts. Final thing I'm gonna say, I guess, is. We hear you loud and clear in terms of when open up beta, we, we fully, fully get it. From my side, I've said, from the day that I started properly playing this, that. I want to open this up as fast as possible. We're all on board with that. We're, we're gonna be going as fast as we can. We just need to do it in a systematic way where we can be sure that. There are as few errors as possible. So just bear with us on that. But the really, really exciting thing is we're gunning. Towards having everyone who has signed up to the, to the beta, to being in by June. Playing a version with in-game yield. And potentially the ability to start playing other players and stuff like that. So I'm not going to go into the details of exactly what those game modes would look like. But we are well and truly. On our way, like we are so close to opening up these gates. And when we do, when it's an open beta and it's survival mode and there's yield. Uh, I honestly, I don't know what's gonna happen, right? Like I, I genuinely like this. I, I'm actually now concerned that. There's going to be core contributors that get addicted to this game and, you know, don't tell anyone and. Start, you know, creating multiple accounts and stuff like that. So no one can tell that they're playing like twenty hours a day. And like, that's a concern to me. That's without yield. You put earning into this. I, I honestly, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be crazy. It's gonna, it, it's that exact thing. That I was wanting, that I said, imagine this. But having fun, imagine earning and playing a game and having fun. Like it would just be insane. It's coming in June. So just bear with us. You can see now the game is real. People are playing it. People are loving it. Just please bear with us and you will be happy.
I love the way Kieran says other core contributors, like it's not gonna be him.
I've literally told Aaron this, when I, like, I'm an addict, I'm an addict. We're like, it's, it's that situation now. So I'm gonna be saying to him, hey. But like very soon, I'm gonna be like, look, there's gonna come a time where. I say to you, and I will be serious, you'll think I'll, I'll be joking, but I will need you to ban my account. And I will come kicking and screaming. Two days later, begging to get in there. I'm gonna have Vulcan and Vedamore messaging me saying, get in, get back in and. I'm not gonna do it. Do not unban me. Because it's a huge risk to, uh, how much output we can, uh, we can put in. But yeah, I'm obviously, again, I'm, I'm poking fun at the situation. It's, uh, it's a good problem to have. It's just, obviously you can tell I'm really, really excited about where we are. We're like so close. To, again, opening those gates that it's not even funny. Anyway.
Good deal. Good deal. Everyone wants to play. All right, well, yep, let's call it then. Thanks, everybody for joining. Um, and yeah, we'll try and do, not sure, I'll announce next time we're gonna do the next one of these, but yep, we'll go on and get out of here. Have a good one, guys.
Thanks, Rich. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, mate. Bye, guys.